Have fun, my gavel, you guys. But no worries, we're going to call this meeting to order of the Leon County Commission on whatever day it is, December 10th, 2024. Mr. County Administrator, do you want to kick us off? Or do I start with the proclamations and everything? Do you announce it? Go ahead.
You do, Mr. Chair.
Oh, we got an invocation.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to start with an invocation by Reverend Dr. Kim Buchanan, the pastor at United Church in Tallahassee. Commissioner O'Keefe, would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my honor to introduce Reverend Dr. Kim Buchanan of the church that my wife and I attend, United Church in Tallahassee, so that y'all can get a little bit of what we get every Sunday.
Yeah, y'all just pray for him every Sunday. He has to listen to me every Sunday. Anyway, it is good, it is good to be with you today. Let's join our hearts together in prayer. Holy One, you love all creation. You, you who take delight in every single person, we thank you. We thank you for the diversity of the natural world. We thank you for the beautiful diversity of the human family. Help us to love our world and the human family just as much as you do. We thank you, Holy One, for our Leon County community, city folks, rural folks, people who come to us for seasons, like students and legislators, our parks, our tree canopy, our lakes. Thank you for the privilege of living in Leon County. We thank you especially today for the people on the dais. These people who represent us and work hard to make our community a stronger, more beautiful, more livable place. We thank you that our commissioners, even when it's hard, work together, always seeking the common good. We thank you for the ways in which they see and act on behalf of all our Leon County citizens. And we'd be remiss if we didn't also thank all the chiefs of staff and other staff who support the people on the dais. We know they work hard. Thank you for them and for their vital work. It is out of our deep gratitude for our county and for those who work on behalf of it that we make our request today. Holy One, we pray for open minds, open ears, and open hearts. We pray for active imaginations, that possibilities for solutions might emerge where only problems have been seen before. We pray that everyone in the room today, commissioners and public alike, will actively seek the common good for our Leon County community. With profound thanks for the joy of living in Leon County, we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioner Minor, you are recognized to present a proclamation.
It's great to be here with you today. I have with me John Escevedo and Tina Lifford of Ricardo's Restaurant. And it's a great honor for me to be with you today to join in celebrating their 25th anniversary of Ricardo's Restaurant. You know, I'm going to read the proclamation, which talks about their story, but it's funny when I called John up a couple of weeks ago to talk about the proclamation, he and I were talking about the restaurant and it brought back a lot of memories for me. In my history as a young teenager, my first job working with adults was at a locally-owned, family-owned restaurant. And it was incredible because it's one of the jobs I look upon most fondly, because within that restaurant, you had a culture that really was like family. You had the extended, you had the family that owned the restaurant, but then you had all the employees there, the cooks, the dishwashers, the waiters, the waitresses, all working together very hard during rush hour on a Friday and Saturday night. And I looked very fondly back on those memories. And as I was talking with John about Ricardo's, you could tell that that type of environment was also at Ricardo's. And just wanted to really kind of celebrate this incredible family-owned business in Tallahassee, in District 3, in Midtown, and wanted to go ahead and read the proclamation for you today. Whereas in 1999, Ms. Tina Lifford, having no restaurant experience other than waiting tables at a truck stop as a teenager, took a chance in purchasing Ricardo's Italian Restaurant on Capital Circle Northeast in Leon County. Tina was a devoted Lucille Ball fan, and having moved to Tallahassee from Jamestown, New York, which is Lucille Ball's hometown, Tina considered the name of the restaurant to be a sign. And whereas Tina built the business up with hard work, getting to know the customers personally, and being known for providing not only excellent food, but also outstanding service, she would regularly walk babies around the restaurant so their parents could eat, she would dress up as a Lucille Ball for the restaurant's yearly anniversary celebration, and chased after patrons all the way out to Capital Circle to say thank you and goodbye. And whereas in 2006, Tina's daughter Alicia and her husband John Escevedo relocated from Tampa to Tallahassee temporarily, with the intention of helping to run the restaurant for a year. And whereas, after a few years in Tallahassee, Alicia and John decided to make Tallahassee their permanent home, and over time purchased Ricardo's from Tina. And whereas Ricardo's has been an outstanding, has an outstanding and dedicated staff, two of whom have worked at the restaurant since before Tina purchased it in 1999. And whereas over the years, Ricardo's has made changes, including moving its location to Betten Place and Midtown, but at least one thing remains unchanged: its secret bread recipe. Every day, the staff at Ricardo's mix, knead, measure, and bake over 200 pounds of dough. And whereas Ricardo's is considered a Leon County treasure, whose family-style operation has made a lasting impression upon thousands of residents and visitors alike. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today we recognize Ricardo's Restaurant in recognition of the restaurant's 25th anniversary in Leon County, dated this 10th day of December 2024, and signed by the Board of County Commissioners Chairman and Commissioners and our County Administrator.
I'm not a man of many words, but I will say that when I got the phone call from Mr. Minor, I had to listen to the message twice because I wasn't sure if it was from me or not. But after all these years too, awful nice being recognized. It's amazing how many people come through the restaurant and we have absolutely terrific relationships with, and the people have worked for us two 20-plus year. Pretty remarkable that we're still here after a lot of uncertainty in our country. I will say though that I love Tallahassee, I love being here, I love that my kids are being born and raised here, and I couldn't chose a better partner as my wife to kind of go through this ride along with me. So she may not be here, but she certainly gets a ton of credit as well. She helps me immensely on the back end of running the restaurant, the day-to-day stuff I run, but I wish she was here because she deserves a lot of the credit as well. So, thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
I just want to thank the community. We've been through a lot of tough times with the economy and COVID, and we have patrons that have, one became a notary to Mary, John, and Alicia 14 years ago, and we've been to baby showers and we're still in contact with many. And my Lucille Ball collection, 95% of it was from customers going all over and bringing me. So, thank you, Tallahassee. Thank you, and we look forward to another 25 years. I won't be here to see them all, but I'm glad many will. Thank you.
And Ms. Lifford, we are so grateful that you saw that Ricardo's sign and took that as a sign, because not only has that been great for your family, but it's also been great for Leon County and the people who live here. You've made a difference. Not only have you served incredible dinners, but you've also made a lot of people happy in this town, and you're connecting us in a way that, food brings people together, right? And when it's great food and with the types of things you do in the restaurant, holding people's babies as they're eating, I can relate to that, it really means a lot. Thank you for everything y'all do.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioners, real briefly, I'd like to recognize some special guests that are with us that are not on the agenda. We've got Youth Leadership Tallahassee Class, somebody help me out, Lilly, 21, Youth Leadership Tallahassee Class 21 is with us here in the chambers. Would you guys mind standing up and let's give them a round of applause? If you guys aren't aware, these are current high school juniors in Leon County who are going through the Youth Leadership Tallahassee Program, which kind of mirrors the Leadership Tallahassee Program that I know a lot of us have experienced. And I feel like I got to give a shout out to School Board Member Daryl Jones, who's, I believe, Leadership Tallahassee Class, created Youth Leadership Tallahassee some 21 years ago. So, School Board Member Jones, you guys' experience is a manifestation of his Leadership Tallahassee Class's ideas, so thank you for being here. Next up, I'm going to pass the gavel real quick to my vice chair while I present a proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am joined at the podium by the captains of the Montford Mustangs District Champion Football Team, along with the principal at Montford Middle School, Tony McQuade, and the head football coach, Keith Cotrell. I'll read the proclamation and I'll say some nice words about these guys because they have done an outstanding job. Whereas the Montford Middle School Mustangs, representing William J. Montford III Middle School in Tallahassee, Florida, have upheld a proud tradition of athletic excellence and sportsmanship, excuse me, since the school's establishment in 2008. Whereas under the exceptional leadership of head coach Keith Cotrell, the Mustangs demonstrated extraordinary teamwork, dedication, and skill throughout the 2024 football season, achieving a remarkable 7-1 record. And whereas the Mustangs showcased resilience and determination culminating in a triumphant victory over the Division 2A District Championship on October 8th, 2024, by defeating Raw Middle School with a score of 24 to 12, thereby earning the prestigious title of District Champions. And whereas the coaching staff, led by head coach Keith Cotrell, provided outstanding leadership and guidance, fostering a spirit of unity, discipline, and excellence among the players. And whereas the Montford Middle School community, including students, parents, faculty, and supporters rallied together to create an atmosphere of encouragement and pride throughout the season. And whereas the 2024 championship marks another milestone in the storied history of the Mustangs, adding to their legacy of multiple district titles, including championships in 2011, 15, 16, 17, 18, and '24. And whereas the achievements of the Montford Mustangs highlight the importance of youth sports in building character, leadership, and lifelong values within our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize the 2024 Montford Middle School Football Team for their district championship, dated this 10th day of December, 2024. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, I was showing the captains around the chambers and stuff before we came in here, and we were looking at the plaque outside with all the county commissioners' names on it, and one of them pointed out to me that in fact William J. Montford's name is on the plaque. And so I told them, you know, that like, not often do we go on from this dais to do great things, but Senator and namesake of your school and former county commissioner Montford certainly did. Montford Middle School is a fantastic facility in northeast Tallahassee, and they have done a really great job, not just in the classroom, but in developing our young athletes. Coach Cotrell right here came on as coach a couple of years ago, an athletic director now, and has really turned that program around. Coach Cotrell and Principal McQuade, former athletes at FSU at a very high level. I hate that Commissioner Maddox is not here because I believe him and Coach Cotrell share a very fancy ring from the 1999 FSU National Championship Squad. So, we are very proud of these guys and everything they represent, and we've got the captains up here right now, they have really built a great culture at Montford Football, not just on the field, but in the classroom. So, Coach Cotrell, Principal McQuade, if you guys would like to speak, I'll leave that right there. We'll take a photo.
Chairman and Commissioners, first, I want to just thank you for having us, for being here to recognize these young men and the team that they represent. As the school principal, I'm proud of all of my students, but anytime we get to recognize my students or our school for doing something great, it's extra special. This group back here, I couldn't be more proud of the accomplishments, not only on the field, but off the field. This football team, 50 young men, have a combined GPA, a team GPA of over 3.5. They are leaders, yes. They are leaders in the classroom, they are leaders on our campus, and they are leaders in our community. So, to be up here recognizing them is an honor, and they're led by a fantastic coach, Coach Keith Cotrell.
Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing our boys. Commissioners, thank you for your support. School Board Member Jones, thank you as well. Of what this proclamation tells these boys and the boys who will come behind them, the value of what education extends beyond the classroom. If Commissioner Maddox was here, he would tell you that we coach not because we want to win football games, but because of the men who influenced us. And we go into education and we do what we do because of the people who influenced us and the responsibility we have to give it to the next generation. The men behind me are people that you would let date your daughters. And as a father of twin girls, I say that seriously. The quality of their character, the way they handle themselves in the heat of the moment, the way they handle themselves when no one's looking, when teachers and athletic administrators are emailing me from other schools, saying that they're the ones staying behind to pick up and clean up gyms and are separating problems on campuses and doing the right thing, that matters far more than scores ever will, because no one remembers the scores from six weeks ago, but they remember how these boys behave. And the value of athletics teaches the life lessons that will put these boys to productive members of society, and they're certainly very proud to defend their turf of northeast Tallahassee and our wonderful Leon County. Thank you for recognizing them.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you got the gavel.
Yes, Mr. Proctor.
Mr. Sims could appreciate this. I was trying to think about who on our team in high school had a 3.5, and I know I couldn't have made this team at Montford, the bar's very high. Congratulations to you all. And that's an outstanding, great point average for the entire team, and it exceeds what you've done on the field, but what you're doing in the classroom is even more extraordinary. So congratulations on your great academic success, complemented by athletics.
Commissioner Proctor, weren't you the starting quarterback at FAMU High back in the day?
I didn't have a 3.5. But look at how far you've made it. Oh, Lord, have mercy.
Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. To the principal and the coach and the players, I met the players in the hall, in chambers, and just very impressed, very respectable young men, and we're so proud of you guys. Your excellence on the field and academically as well, you certainly epitomized the phrase "student athletes." So we are proud of you, proud of your championship, and congratulations. You make us look good, and we're very proud. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Florida City County Management Association, recognition of Leon County's government, 25th anniversary in the Professional Management Matters Program.
Mark Ryan.
Tough act to follow. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the County Commission, County Administrator Long, county staff, and residents of Leon County. My name is Mark Ryan, and I'm a retired city manager. For more than 40 years, I managed three cities in Brevard County and Florida's East Central Florida, and I now reside here in Leon County. I've been appointed a senior advisor by the Florida City County Management Association and the International City County Management Association that provides guidance and assistance to local governments throughout the state of Florida, and there are eight of us in the state of Florida. On behalf of the Florida City County Management Association, I'm privileged to present to the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, a certificate celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Council Commission Manager Form of Government, as recognized by the International City Management Association. On behalf of the Officers, Board of Directors, Memberships of the FCCMA, we offer our sincere congratulations on this outstanding milestone. The Council Commission Manager Form of Government was created to help separate administration from direct political influence and establish merit-based policies within local government. It's modeled after a corporation, where the framework of voters or the stockholders select a council or the board of directors, who in turn appoint a manager-administrator, a professional executive, to advise the commission and implement the actions through ordinances and policies. In Florida, nearly 70% of the 411 cities, towns, and villages operate under the Council Commission Manager Form of Government, and of the 67 counties, all but two operate under this form of government. Leon County is very fortunate to have Administrator Vince Long leading the county. Administrator Long has a wealth of institutional knowledge of the community and is working hard with you, the county commissioners, in implementing the policies and objectives that you adopt. These are very professional staff that work with you to accomplish the goals and objectives. The numerous programs, capital projects, and services that are provided through this team is outstanding and is recognized throughout the state of Florida. You've achieved so much, with so much more to achieve in the future. You're going to be talking about your resiliency from hurricanes and tornadoes. That's through a professional staff to help guide you through those issues. We commend you for having a professional management team to lead you and lead your county, my county, as we move forward into this next decade. With that, we'd like to present a certificate recognizing... Commissioner, Chairman, and Administrator Long, please.
I got to ask Mark, you said you were a city manager?
Yes.
I mean, do they have like a secret club where administrative government managers meet and they have like a picture of Vince Long on the wall, like a...
Vince is very recognized, Mr. Chair. As you may know, he is a recipient of the International City Management Association, distinguished service award. We're very proud of him and his leadership in our association.
We often refer to him as being the greatest county manager in the universe. In the universe, yes. I mean, if there's an intergalactic city manager association, county manager, he's the enemy.
Here, 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 that's right.
Commissioner Proctor loves that.
Dude.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation of a $150,000 donation from the Friends of the Leon County Public Library.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll go down and accept that. That's a Christmas present, you know, bonus.
We are so excited to be here today to present this check to the Leon County Public Library. My name is Lisa Harvey, and I am the outgoing president of Friends of the Library, and with me today is Morgan Evers, who is the incoming president-elect.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would just like to say that in my role currently as treasurer, I thought it was pretty cool last year to bring y'all $100,000, but the library really is so much more than books. You talked earlier about the restaurant being so much more than a restaurant with food. Libraries truly bring people in this community together outside of books. In the last few years, we've done the Library of Things, we've done just so many different moving parts in addition to, you know, the already established library system that exists, and it wouldn't be without Ms. Wonderful Director Pamela. She leads y'all's way, and we're so excited this year to be able to give $150,000. It came to our attention that there are some renovations happening at the library and some really cool things like a podcast room, and if you've not come out to the library in a long time, please do. Pamela and her crew are doing amazing things, and it's just an honor to be able to serve in the way of Friends of the Library, so thank you.
I will be very brief, but it is with great pleasure, you know, to serve with this wonderful group of people. Our Friends of the Library do so much for this county, and, you know, to have such a lovely offer. We're going to do a lot with this as well, so thank you, Lisa and Morgan, and Friends of the Library who are watching. We're having a big meeting tomorrow, so you can always come out and be a friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you. My button here is not working, but I just wanted to thank the Friends of the Library for doing this. In fact, this is worth a standing ovation. Let's do a standing ovation for this. Let's do a standing ovation for this. Ms. Evers, Ms. Harvey, thank you very much for everything that you and everybody at Friends does for the libraries, but also for the community. It's... You all said it very well. I mean, you know, the libraries help us form the cohesion within our community here, whether it's at the main branch or the satellites. I mean, they're incredibly important to the fabric of Leon County, and I can't thank you enough. Ms. Harvey, I also want to tell everybody that in addition to the outgoing president of Friends of the Library, she's also an outstanding gingerbread house judge. So, Ms. Evers, welcome. Thank you. Looking forward to your term. And Ms. Monroe, thank you for everything that you and your library staff do at all the branches. This is one of the incredible benefits that citizens have in Leon County is our library system. I just want to thank all of you for making it that way. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. All right. Thank you all so much. Would anybody else want to... Okay. I think next up on the agenda, we've got a presentation by the Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Stephanie Schumate, you have the mic.
Hello. Are we good? Okay, we're good. Hello, good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Welch, and Commissioners and county staff for having us today for our annual report. I am going to introduce and turn it over, and we're going to tag team a little bit, but this is our vice chair of the commission, and she is a wonderful human being. It's Dr. Jasmine Bryant. So, not other than just being an awesome vice chair and our Health and Development Committee Chair for the past three years, two years, three? Three years. She's an awesome mom, friend, and leader, and professor, and researcher at FAMU. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bryant, but thank you for having us, and we're excited to be here with you today.
Awesome. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to present our annual report to you all. Before I begin, I would like to ask if any Commissioners are present from the CSWG, please stand and be acknowledged. Thank you all so much. Thank you all.
So, last year, we had Adella Gademi, which now I like to make sure we... Everyone knows Dr. Adella Gademi. She got her doctorate this past year while serving as chair for the first time of the commission, was unable to be here today. But this was just a glimpse of the leadership last year of these amazing women that helped have an amazing and wonderful year. Dr. Adella Gademi and Dr. Jasmine Bryant were the main leadership, and then these other six women of our six standing committees. And some have returned, some rolled off, some moved, some had babies. And so, we are thankful. We just wanted to take a moment to recognize these wonderful women. And we'll just give a little bit of a highlights of last year and tell you what we're headed to for this year. So, the best and the funnest thing probably we did last year was our summit, so I'll let Jas tell you all about that.
Yes, so we had our empowerment summit, which focused on not only women, but also girls as well, and we're really excited to report some of those things to you all. Dr. Lisa Henkelman served as our keynote speaker from rocks, and she has a wealth of expertise and research as it relates to issues impacting women and girls across the country. So, we were able to hear some of that dynamic research. We had five tracks: advocacy, resilience, empowerment, and youth. And then we also had a track on women can run. We had 20-plus breakout sessions, over 220 attendees, and thank you all who were able to attend and support our Women and Girls Summit. We truly appreciate your attendance. One of the key things we want to highlight is that with this summit, we provided free childcare, which is a reoccurring practice of the CSWG. We understand that our community, especially women, want to be involved in these types of activities. However, childcare is an issue, and we'll talk about that a little bit further. And then we also secured some in-kind donations and cash to assist with having this summit and the success of it. A few additional highlights from '23 to '24. The county, you all, thank you all so much, expanded the parental leave policy. So, we want to say thank you so much for your attention to that and prioritizing that effort, and so we thank you for that. In addition, we increased our community committee membership by 81%. And you may be saying, what are community committee members? Those are the folks who are boots on the ground at a variety of direct service organizations that are keeping us abreast of the priority areas that their populations are experiencing or clients that they are experiencing. We also increased partnership with a few organizations across the city to better understand what services are being provided, what potential gaps may be there, and how those agencies can partner, and again prioritize that free childcare. We hosted community connection events for women and girls serving organizations. One of the things we consistently hear from those organizations is that they may not know what other organizations are also providing services or what services other orgs are providing. So, to kind of fill those gaps, we serve as a conduit for that. We also hosted a youth roundtable in conjunction with the Tallahassee Police Department's Youth Advisory Board, and that was really important to hear from the youth and what they feel are some of the pressing issues that they're experiencing here in our area. And then we also partnered with 13 specific women and girls serving organizations to co-host candidate questionnaire forums. And while a lot of that planning took place in 2023, 2024, those forums actually took place in our new commission year in October. And so, that was a really hands-on deck effort, and we're really excited about the outcomes of that. And thank you so much, Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Welch, for participating and hearing the concerns and questions from constituents. We appreciate you all attending and participating.
So, as we head into this new year, we have... We know a lot happens over multiple years, and things don't just happen overnight. And the goal with the continued leadership, which I'm excited about, both Dr. Gademi and Dr. Bryant have decided to stay on another year as chair and vice chair. And we really do have a great working relationship to be able to bounce ideas. They tell me how I can support them. I love supporting them. And just looking at how we can continue to make really great policy recommendations to y'all that are data-driven, and that's where we're really excited about something that we're in the final stretches of in the next about probably two months, two and a half months. So, I'm going to kick it back over to my wonderful vice chair here.
Awesome. So, this is the leadership for 2024, 2025 for our six standing committees. And so, we are excited. I think we have one of our chairs here with us, Commissioner Martin. So, thank you so much for political equity chair and all of your hard work with those forums as well. So, what's on the horizon? So, we gave you all a little preview of what we did last year because a lot of that work informed the current year, including the summit and the information we received from attendees. So, we are in the process of overhauling and relaunching our CSWG website because it matters. And so, that is one of the key things that we have been focused on, is having a better online presence just to match the presence that we have in community. We are also launching the Well-being of Women and Girls Digital Dashboard, and we are excited to hopefully have that early 2025. And that will essentially provide us a glimpse of how women and girls are doing in our local area across those six dimensions that our commission focuses on. Some additional areas are continued free childcare, expanding parental leave policy with the city. And so, we are hoping to have similar outcomes as we did with our county commissioners, existing and building upon partnerships with nonprofits as well as local businesses with examining their parental leave policies. We're also excited that we're digging into diaper-changing accommodations. We found that other cities have some of those ordinances and things that they provide, and so we're looking into that thanks to Director Schumate, who came across that and flagged that.
Diaper changing is important.
It is.
We all know that of your parents and having accessible opportunities, so, yeah.
So, we're excited to do some research on that this year. Additionally, we're continuing our efforts with the LGBTQ+ initiatives and working with the city, specifically with the Mayor's Council LGBTQ+ Advisory Council. We're also working to increase our community awareness. Sometimes people do or do not quite understand what the CSWG does and who we are, and so that is a critical priority area for us. And then lastly, continuing to coordinate those connections between direct service organizations, nonprofits, and local businesses to do the work to advance women and girls in our community.
And we have about six different committees, and this kind of sums up the general work that we do on a day-to-day basis. We have a program assistant part-time and myself as the staff, so one and a half staff with our regular ongoing work here. And everything's publicly noticed. So, anytime y'all want to come visit us at a commission meeting, we would love to have you. We know we've seen a couple of you at our full commission meetings, but we would love to have you if you ever want to come. So, the December one's coming up, next Friday. Just open invite. Open invite. So, this year, kind of as we head in, we have our six different committees, and we're going to go through just a little bit about what each of them are focused on as we head into the new year. The Economic Security Committee, which is chaired by Kay Meyer, they're really looking deeper into affordable and accessible housing and looking at what our local community is already doing and how we can continue to uplift it and partner with them. And one of the big things that's come out of roundtables is the continued economic empowerment, but also continued financial literacy and awareness of opportunities for women and girls around economics and finances. So, those are two main points for that committee. The Education Committee, which is chaired by Gillian Gregory. The chronic absenteeism issue in our community is one that was brought to light by another commissioner, Dr. Anika Williams, and they're really looking at that and partnering with the school board on absentee awareness campaign. Because we know we don't direct policy towards the school board, that's state-driven, but how can we create a difference in our community and with an awareness campaign and roundtables? Also, there's some really innovative ideas about opportunities to women in our community that are untraditional, viewed as untraditional and underrepresented fields, with a really great idea from our chair, Gregory, and working with high schools about trade certification completion upon graduation. So, not only there's a pilot program she's trying to model and work with, but graduating with their AA, their high school diploma, and then a certificate of completion, which we know sets people up for success and already having a job and being able to continue their education. Employment and Earnings Committee, which is chaired by Caroline Pryor, is really dug their heels into high-quality, affordable, and accessible childcare and potentially a 24-hour childcare facility here in our community and what that could look like and what that does for our members of the community. We had a roundtable last week with Kids, Inc. parents, and it was amazing to hear from them about what a 24-hour childcare facility would do. So, we're excited about that work.
Awesome. As it relates to Health and Development Committee, a few of the priority areas include comprehensive public health messaging. Additionally, an initiative looking at involving local businesses to advance the well-being of women and girls and families in our community known as businesses for a Better Tallahassee Initiative. We're also working on period poverty awareness and accessibility across our county, mental health and women and girls, as well as perinatal health. A lot of these priority areas for HTC came about through our community committee members who were seeing issues with pregnant moms and mental health and a variety of other issues. And so, those areas are part of our priorities for '24, '25. With Political Equity Committee, a few of the areas of priority, increasing civic engagement, particularly among women and girls, awareness and restoration of voting rights for formerly incarcerated women and girls, increase regular meetings with city and county commissioners to encourage our commissioners to engage with you all, to have a better partnership and understand you all's priorities and how we can service you all even the more, and then increase regular recognition of women and girls within the city and the county and the work that they're doing. Lastly, our Violence and Safety Committee, a few of the areas of priority, increased stat pro training and certification, which is a training and certification focused on human trafficking awareness. So, encouraging businesses, elected officials, and women and girls serving organizations to partake in that training. Also, increasing bystander intervention training, along with increasing collaboration with TPD's Youth Advisory Council, and obviously continued research as it relates to gun violence and intersectionality with women and girls in our community.
So, as you can tell, there's a lot on the docket, and there always will be because part of that is our amazing commissioners constantly doing research, talking to the amazing organizations and nonprofits that exist in our community that are seeing what women and girls are facing on a day-to-day basis and are always bringing that forward. And we are always welcome to, if there's something specific you're seeing in your district or a passion point that anything we just said is resonating with you, we would really like to have further conversations about how we can partner together and develop some really comprehensive and great policies to improve the lives of women and girls in our community.
Yeah. So, thank you all, and if there are any questions, we're happy to entertain them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate you coming and letting us know everything you've got going on over there. We do have quite a few Commissioners in the queue that would like to speak. Commissioner Minor, you are up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Schumate, Dr. Bryant, thank you for providing the update. I really appreciate it. You know, at home, I have... I live with three ladies, incredible women. Well, one woman and two girls, one of which was a former chair of the CSWG. So, we often talk about the status of women and girls in our house, and the work that you do is important. It's necessary, and it's needed. And I just wanted to thank you very much for all the work that you do, you and the other Commissioners. We're very grateful to have the talent that you have within the commission working so hard. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Schumate and Dr. Bryant, thank you for that overview of your report, and we're certainly proud of all the work that you all do that's deliberately directed to women and girls. I read your report, which is actually on our agenda, on the consent agenda today, item 13. It is a beautiful report, and it shows all the hard work that you all have done in 2024, and then we see the projections for 2025. It's just amazing. So, thank you all, your board of directors and your staff, for all that you do that enhances and uplifts our women and girls in the community. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor.
You all, professors, I appreciate your report today. Your invitation was if there are comments that we will make reflective of what we have seen, and I'll take you up on that. The majority of our community are women. Our Deus has won. Our city commission is underrepresented. Our school board is not reflective of the presence of women in this community. I'm speculating, but I ponder, what is it about leadership that women are reticent to exceed, to pursue, and to step into that vacuum? Women are targeted, have been targeted. November the 5th signals something very strong, which for me is anti-woman, in particular in leadership. If I ask you, what is the goal? What is the type of woman, girl, this organization is seeking to develop? Someone says a woman is from Tallahassee, a young girl, one of these high school students is from Tallahassee, and that signals, is she docile? Is she acquiescent? Or does she have moxie? And is a Karen Woodall, like that lady sitting on the front seat who's been a public policy advocate for, that's okay, I won't, three decades-ish? And who is the next Karen Woodall of our community? Chastie Osteen, Carolyn Cummings, their footprints weigh heavily in the ground of Leon County. And what is, with intentionality, do you do to invoke or provoke girls the step to have kick-ass ability in leadership?
We're both girl moms, so I love that question. One, I think the biggest thing is all women and girls in our community is the type of woman and girl that we're raising and that we're supporting. Your question about the underrepresentation, actually, the Women Can Run program that we had at the summit directly addresses that. And a fun fact, if we want to use fun in quotations, it actually takes a woman, on average, about seven times to be asked to run for office or to even consider to run for office to do something, seven times. So, that research is crazy, is how do we get that number instead of seven times? It's, you know, Jas wakes up one day and says, "I'm going to run for office," or any of our Commissioners, or any of those young women with YLT. And I think part of it is the research, the awareness, and the continued effort. But just to speak to that one message and your one question, the Women Can Run program is a direct program that the commission promotes, that we try to expand every year, try to bring back to get more women and young... bring back to get more women and young women involved in the political process, because it's not just about sitting on the dais, but also working in campaigns is the focus of that program, too.
Yeah. And I would just add a few of the things that we have talked about for women who may be interested is if they have a family, sometimes that's a barrier to actually running for office, if they're the person that's usually working but also raising children. And so that is why when we're having the Women Can Run, we're providing that childcare so that they can still come and get this information, uptake, these resources, and any way that we can support them in doing that is essentially one of our priority areas. And so we do appreciate that question.
Are you all focused on a particular strata of women, is like $40,000 per year income and less? Are you looking at women $150,000, like women who make money like Attorney Osteen? What are the parameters in terms of your focus with these six areas which are cited in Agenda Item 13?
Yeah, so across all six of those priority areas, it's not broken out based on just income, right? We understand that women across all income are experiencing a variety of issues, whether it's health, whether it's social issues, violence and safety, and so we're not just focused on one income priority. When we had the summit, we were intentional about having it during certain hours of the day so that if working moms wanted to attend, there was availability to do so. When we're looking at who we are, you know, promoting and wanting to engage, we're promoting and trying to engage any woman, any girl interested, because we know all the experiences really can make an impact if they decide to enter and run and make a difference in our community in that way. So we're really open in prioritizing all women, especially is what we did with the summit.
My final comment, Mr. Chairman, if you allow, observationally. The infant mortality piece, I didn't really see anything when I went through on that point. But in Leon County, our black infant mortality, the last time I heard the number, I think it was 15, 14, 15, really high. And infant mortality is not limited to educational levels, income levels, social status. It's across the board. Is y'all's organization looking at that area and conjunctively with data generated on 32304, women in the 32304 zip code are facing particular challenges? And I just leave that as a final ask.
You have the best person to answer it. She's chair of our Health and Development Committee, so she can.
Yes, Commissioner Proctor, that is a priority area for us. In fact, one of our community committee members, Ms. Maisha Mitchell, has been working really closely to help us understand the contributing factors to the disparities we see in 32304. In addition to that, our HTC has been meeting with our Leon County Health Department to better understand these statistics. What are some of those contributing factors that they are seeing, and in what ways can policy be recommended for our local area to enhance those numbers? And so that is a shared priority for us, and it was an area we focused on in 2324, and we'll move forward with 2425, which is also why we're focusing on perinatal mental health and the shortage of perinatal counselors here to provide those services to our moms. So that is indeed a priority area for us.
Very good. Commend your work. Thank you for answering.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for all the work you do, and I just want to highlight and thank you both building out into the community and bringing things to our attention to improve things, from bringing the parental leave policy stuff to my attention to the board, and then the Family Resource Center at Cross Creek in my district has been incredible. And it feels like we were just at the grand opening, and then I was back visiting recently, and it's already going for expansion, and there are people there constantly. It's just been, it has been beyond what we could usually expect from a new resource center, and I just really appreciate it, and I know that the people in the Cross Creek area do.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we've got a presentation on the Career Source Capital Region Annual Report. Jim McShane, you can step to the podium.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. Happy to be here. I have a quick report. This is going to be something pretty quick, so you're going to see it go fast. It's like flashcards. But before I do flashcards on number 18 today, you are going to approve the inter-local agreement, and I appreciate that because you're the last county out of our four that will approve it. We've got the other three counties already done. Jefferson is up and running. We have our first commissioner coming on board, so I appreciate the help that I got from Commissioner Maddox and from Keith Ben. So we had our basically Talent Innovation Summit. We ran it every year for six years, and this year, this next year, we're not going to due to staffing and funding reductions. The board is also starting each board meeting with a mission moment. That was our board chair's request, and so we have either a person like this who came in front of the board at the last meeting, or we have a career seeker who also came in front of the board, and they tell their story, which is a good thing. Outside, right now, we currently have a Business and Employee Solutions Group. They go call on all our businesses and try and give them the services that they're looking for, and so we're happy that we keep moving along with that. Next is our Special Projects and Grants. If you haven't met Renee, I can't believe that, because she's everywhere. She is outstanding lady. Absolutely pleased that we are able to continue. She's under a special grant. Didn't look like this last year we were going to get it, but they did finally say yes before we had to say goodbye to her. So thankfully, she's on for another year. Next one is our apprenticeship grant, so we've got grants, a grant trying to have more apprenticeships in our area. And at this point, we have six or seven apprenticeships that are sitting in front of the Department of Education that have gone nowhere, and we don't know why. And so I've got commissioners working on that right now here, and I do appreciate that help. Next, professional development, so we do workshops for our businesses. They're free for the first two, and then after that, they have to pay a minimal fee, and we do get a lot of businesses that will take us up on that. Hiring recruiting fair, so we're reducing that at this point. We're having a jobs-every-Friday type of thing that we're moving around to the counties. They just took too much staff time, and we just don't have the money to do that. Our Career Seeker Solutions, we continue to help and serve every person that comes to see us that's looking for a job, helping them either get a scholarship, which we still do. But on this one, this is where our solutions are. This is the data for you at this point. So we've done 37,000 solutions. We've had 2,500 career seekers registered in Employee Florida. In the year I came here in 2013, we had 40,000 people coming through our three centers. We now have somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000. So it's definitely gone down after COVID. Career seekers receiving solutions, and we've also here are the top programs that you see. CDL is still number one, although I'm really starting to dissuade the staff from doing it. It's very easy to put somebody in a truck-driving school, but we have to follow them for a year, and generally, a lot of them do not stay with it for a year. They realize how hard that job is, and they don't really want to stay with it. So we're looking at other things, and firefighter, we just did a couple of firefighters this year, so happy that we're doing that. And then our top two schools is lively, and Tallahassee should be changed, State College. So we're really good with them. LEAP is our Learn, Earn, and Advance Program that we do with our youth program. We have about 50 youth in this program on a general basis. We also provide work experience when we have the youth there. We work with businesses to be able to put them in a job. We pay for up to 480 hours for them to be in that job so that they can learn and earn, and hopefully, at the end, they get employed there. But even if they don't, we obviously will help them get employment somewhere else. Our summer youth program, we're proud of working with the county here. This is, I think, third or fourth year, I'm not sure, with Paula Bowles-Johnson, and I just, I'm proud that we're continuing this honor, we're able to help out. Gadsden, for the first time, actually, their commission spent enough money for $1,400 a person for 200 youth to put them through a summer program of six weeks, and then we had 11 youth that we had money for that we matched to do. Hope Florida is Casey DeSantis' big thing that she's doing. It's really welfare to work, trying to get people that are on welfare, coming off of welfare, to come to us and get a job. So we are working hard to get that program running as good as we can. By the numbers, one-stop operations, so we have three centers. We're in the library over in Jefferson County right now. It's not quite working out the way it should, so we're working on, we'll be working with the school system to see if we can find a place for a person to be at. We are working with our libraries, so thank you, and we are in all seven libraries here, and we appreciate that MOU that we have with the library system. Connections in our communities, we do a lot of outreach. We have over 60 partners that refer people to us. We're in the Carney Center at this point, and I don't know, Commissioner Maddox, are we in your center yet? No. OK, but we're coming, right? OK, all right. And so we're in various places, and I'm still on the Big Bend COC board, so I'm still looking at homelessness. We still try and get people like that to come in and get them a job. We work with veterans. We have a special grant for that, too. This is our assets, what we have to start. We have to spend our money first and then get reimbursed by the Department of Commerce, Florida Commerce, which is reimbursed by the Department of Labor. We spend about $5 million a year. It used to be 10 long ago, so every year, we get cut. This year, we got a 9% cut. People want to know, why are we getting cut? Because our unemployment rate is very low, and when that's very low, then that money goes to places where it's higher. So that's one of the issues that we hope someday they change that, because we still have a lot of people coming to see us that need additional help and additional assistance. So here's our financial highlight. This is where I spend our money. The We O Adult and Youth Program is the biggest program we have. There's a law right now up in Congress that we're not happy with at this point that could cause major disruption in our system. We'll just have to see. It could pass before the end of this year. If it doesn't pass, then I think it's going to start again next year, and they'll have to start over again. But so our functional express, you know, we spend a lot of money on a place. Our offices here in Blairstone cost me $300,000 a year. That's a huge chunk of money, and as we get smaller, we moved out of Innovation Park this year because we needed to put them in a space and save some additional dollars. So I'm doing what I can in leading to make sure that we make it through what we're doing and keep serving people. This is the board, sample of the board meeting, our board members there, and we had the gentleman that's standing over to my left on here, yes, to your left, too. He is the chairman of the National Association of Workforce Boards. He flew down here just to be able to give Beth Chiketti an award because she was on his board since 2017 and just came off this year. And then finally, you've got a list of our Board of Directors, which you all have a copy of this, and Nick is our elected official on our consortium board. Reach Act meant that we ended up adding Jefferson County to our area, and we're doing fine. I presented similarly to that county just two, three weeks ago, and we're working to get a second person on our board from that county. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McShane. Commissioner Proctor, you're in the queue.
McShane, ask you a question.
Sure.
If the United States Department of Education is modified, is projected, how would that impact Career Source?
The Department of Education probably won't impact us. It's really Department of Labor where most of our money comes from. But at this point, that law, if it goes through, it's going to require that I pay 50% of my money towards scholarships. Right now, we only have demand for about 32% of our money for scholarships, and that addition between the 32% and 50% is what pays for my business solutions team. So if I have to spend that, I will not have a business solutions team at the end. And then they're also doing, raising the requirement or giving the governor an extra 10%, 10% of our set aside, so right now, he gets 15%. He'll get 25% if that law goes through. That means he's taken off the top of the whole system another 10%. So that's going to be a 10% reduction in our income across the board. So there's a lot of turmoil right now, and so I can't predict at this point what's going to happen. We're waiting for that law to either be passed or not passed, and they got to the end of December, and you know they can do it at midnight, or maybe an hour before midnight if they want.
So the undermining of poor people and--
That's correct.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And the ladders with which they climb up out of poverty, those ladders are being sold off, are projected to be sold off. Let me say and ask critically, from 40,000 traffic figure in 2013 when you first came to a traffic figure of 6,000 to 8,000, what explains that?
Part of it is, Commissioner, part of it is the demographics of what's happening right now. If you've read the demographic drought by Lightcast, you'll see that we have less people being born, that right now, the next generation coming up will be the alphas and the zoomers everybody knows about. Those are smaller groups than the millennials who are having them, and so this is getting less and less people into our system. We need immigration, folks from immigration getting approved to get into these jobs that we cannot fill. There's not enough children in our system to be able to fill the future needs of our businesses.
I appreciate you saying that. In my notes, I have immigration, but you didn't mention it, and I didn't either. But to that extent, hostile policies toward those who have that designation, immigrant, seems to me to also play a role in undermining the labor pool--
Yes.
--of our area. And is your board writing any white papers or position statements with respect to public policymaking in terms of our labor force here in North Florida?
So yes, our association, the Florida Workforce Development Association, is very engaged. We have lobbyists here in our area that works with our legislature. We do not have a lobbyist in Washington, DC, but the National Association, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, NACO, all of them have somebody working in our benefit, for our benefit at the national level. So we support them, we give them letters of support, we write our congressmen and our senators. That's about all we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to ask Mr. McShane, who's given yeoman's service of last decade, and I respect the work, the efforts you all have laid for our community. But I would like to curtail comments now to commissioners to say, I think that Mr. McShane has very candidly shared with us tidbits of which and why we ought to include as a part of our legislative vision, these things that will impact our labor force. And I think that understanding those legislative markers, which will undermine, is a reason that we shouldn't, ought not be silent to the efforts that he cited. And in any way that we can, I mean, Mr. McShane, you know, crunch down and simplify the wording, and I'm asking if you would share with us some of those elements that we can adopt, include in our national comments as well as state as well, because when you go from 40,000 people engaged 10 years ago to 6,000 to 8,000 now, that's critical. That is like three-fourths, well, I don't do public math, but anyway, that's a lot, you know? Nick, that's a lot, Nick. That's a lot. So we got a problem. I mean, this is-- that's a lot, Nick. That's a lot. So, we got a problem. I mean, this is, this is the canary in the mine. And that's what makes this so critical in having right people. And coupled with any major modification of the United States Department of Education, it's just lights out and not sure where we're going. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McShane.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question. Obviously, we have major challenges, as you discussed, and as Commissioner Proctor discussed. Are there any other community issues that aren't necessarily under your programs, but you see prevent us from succeeding in our workforce goals?
Yes, the three, top three, basically, at this point, always has been childcare, number one. Number two is transportation, and number three now is housing. Those are the three, three things that are very much a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McShane. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We are on citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have two cards in under this section on the agenda. First one, Stanley, Mr. Stanley Sims, to be followed by Karen Woodall. But Ms. Woodall, we've got item number 15 pulled, so I can call on Ms. Woodall at that time. So, with that, Mr. Stanley Sims.
I'm Stanley Sims, and I'm deliciously proud resident of 1320 Avondale Way. I'm here for two reasons today. One, I wanted to get on camera and let everybody know I ain't dead. I missed a couple of meetings, and everybody kept asking me, are you all right? Where you been? So, I'm fine, y'all. Just every now and then, you have to take some rest, you know. And so, I decided to start investing a little time into me. And but I do appreciate all the calls and the concerns. I want to come up and, Mr. Long, I talk about your staff in their face and behind their back, because I know I'm extra. I'm not a threat, but I'm extra. When I say extra, when I want an answer, I'm going to get an answer. I'm not going to break any laws, but I'm going to make sure I get an answer that is suffice. And there's an issue in our community that I believe that is not getting the appropriate attention, and that is pedestrian safety. Now, initially, when I brought this issue before you all, I was really concerned in just some pedestrian certain areas. But in my studying and awareness of this issue, we're now having several accidents on Appalachian Parkway. Accidents that are resulting in death or injuries that require hospitalization. There is a lot of development that is going on that is causing us, well, I don't say, I think that really need to cause us to take a greater look at our sidewalks. Is our sidewalks compatible to, y'all, please forgive me and take what I say in love. Let's look at that development right there at the corner of Tennessee Street and McComb. That big development going up, is that sidewalk appropriate? Is that enough room for that busy traffic there? Or have we set up another scenario where pedestrians are not safe? And, Mr. Long, I just want to tell, I appreciate your staff, because when I talk to them, they know I'm just extra. I'm not a threat. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Are we going to hold off on Ms. Woodall, or--
Sure.
Is that cool with you?
Sure.
Okay. All right, Mr. County Administrator, I believe we're on consent. I think we've had a handful of items pulled, so I would entertain a motion on the non-pulled items.
So, move.
All right, we've got a motion from Vice Chair Caban, second from Commissioner Cummings, on the items not pulled from consent. Anybody want to, Mr. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I just wanted to give on number 14, Affordable Housing Committee Recommendations. I want to give credit to staff and Rethink Energy Florida for working together for another win-win improvement. One of the improvements in this item this year is for homes going through our, some of our rehab programs, we're going to require a more efficient and environmentally friendly AC unit that, one, curbs climate impact, and because of utility bill savings for the client, overall cost is going down. So, just want to give them a shout out for another win-win solution.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. All right, so we've got, Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is item 14. We're on item 14.
Well, we were going to vote on the non-pulled items, but if you want to discuss item 14, the County Administrator can introduce it. Is that what you're asking me?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner O'Keefe was speaking to the item that he pulled on item number 14 again, so if--
Item 15 has been pulled. I don't know the other three items that have been pulled, Commissioner, or Mr. County Administrator, on my agenda. So, we're trying to vote on the non-pulled items, which would include 14, I think.
14 has been pulled by Commissioner Proctor.
Okay, so, can we hold off on that? Okay. So, we're going to vote on the items that have not been pulled. We've got a motion from Commissioner Caban, a second from Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, it passes unanimously. Now, we can move to the items that have been pulled. Mr. County Administrator, can you let me know which ones those are?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number nine, 14, and 15 have been pulled. Items number nine and 14 by Commissioner Proctor, number 15 by Commissioner O'Keefe. I'll start with number nine, Commissioners. Number nine is an amendment to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Spring Grant for the advancement of, for the Advanced Septic Systems Pilot Project. This item simply, Commissioners, is extending, seeks to extend the grant term with an existing grant that we have. You know, we don't like giving money back to the state. This simply allows us to do two more septic-to-sewer conversions. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on that. That's item number nine.
Commissioner Proctor, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask staff, and I'm certain Commissioner Caban probably is equally as eager to know, given that we're extending the date to disperse this money to undergird support for 80 additional homeowners, what is the plan that we will not miss the deadline by April of 2026? It's got to be at least somebody in Woodville who's looking for grant support for the conversion of septic to sewer. And I'm pondering, what is so, what is the plan of communicating? Is we going door-to-door? Why did we miss the mark? What is it about giving money away that we can't, we can't do? And this kind of money, it boggles my mind to appreciate what have we failed to do to get rid of this money that we're needing to extend by another year and something to do septic-to-sewer. I'm not sure if this is regrettable yet, but please help me to know what will we do? And will we meet the target? To give away money to 80 people? I mean, what failures do we have? We need more staff? What do we need to do to get these people engaged with monies that otherwise we would forfeit and send back to the state?
Commissioner Proctor, just so we can be in order, can we get, somebody get a motion and a second as we go into discussion on the item?
Chairman, I'm not ready to. I mean, I saw the memo that went out that indicated that before we could discuss, we would have to make a motion first. I think that was, what, 1.035, 1.5, some policy number. I think the posture, what I'm trying to ask is generic, is not in to favor the motion or to disfavor it. And I think we ought to be able to get, before we cock the trigger and load the barrel, on a motion going one way or the other, are we not privy to get generic information first before making a motion? But if you're the chairman, I respect whatever you tell.
Commissioner Proctor, just trying to keep us consistent, so that's the way we've done it, I think.
For the purpose of discussion, I make a motion for staff recommendation.
And I second.
Thank you.
And my, inquiry's already been made.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I hand it off to Anna, let me just clarify just a couple of things. No, this has been a very successful program, so let me be very clear about that. We've got 77 or 78 systems already completed. When we did our cost projections, we just determined that we did, we were able to do those conversions for less money. And we've got some additional dollars remaining, so we're just simply asking the state so as not to give any dollars back and do all the tanks that we can do. We've are requesting the extension of the term to do two additional tanks. That's all. That's all this does. Again, very successful program. I've already completed 78 of them. We had additional dollars, and we're seeking the state's okay to extend that term to do two additional septic tanks, again, because we are not leaving any money on the table. So, with that, I think, and I might have said what you were going to say, but--
Yeah, you summed it up really well. We do have two, like you said, two additional systems. They are currently in permitting, and the contractor is ready to go on them as soon as we get permits and--
Very good. I'm supporting this item.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Maddox and a second by Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 14 is the 2024 Annual Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's Report and Recommendations. This comes to you this time every year, Commissioners, with recommendations for any tweaking or positioning of our affordable housing programs to identify better opportunities for us to access dollars, state dollars and federal dollars. Again, this comes to you this time every year. We're happy to answer any questions on this. Jelani Marks is in the queue here and ready to roll. Should you have any questions on it?
All right, Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion, boost staff recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe and a second from Commissioner Minor. We're in discussion. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, like I've said, when the motion has been made, in particular to support staff's recommendation, it places us as commissioners facing an uphill argument against the staff. So, when we are quick to pull trigger to support staff's recommendation, it places the presentation in a defensive, or at least an uphill, because I've got a motion over my head that perhaps I may or may not be supportive of. That's the point I'm trying to make. I wanted to indicate here that under Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Recommendations, under A3 on attachment 1, page 7 of 10, the Director of Office of Human Services and Community Partnerships and Staff are the designated liaisons with the Affordable Housing Program and assist with the resolution of difficult permitting issues. Jelani, what's up, man?
Commissioner.
All right, all right. I'm not sure that this involves you, but I appreciate your standing there. My point here is that I've identified something which is a process is not being afforded to the latners, who in Woodville area have spent a lot of money. They've had questions with respect to their investment in permitting. We have a staff's recommendation, unless this is already policy, that calls for, and I know it may sound like lemons and the green one, what's that thing, the green ones called, what's the green lemons called? Lime. And we might have lemons and lime. But, we have here the Director of the Office of Human Services and Community Partnership and staff who are designated to assist with the resolution of difficult permitting issues. And the latners don't have that. They don't have that assistance. They don't have a committee. They don't have that due process. And in reading this element of recommendations, we need that across the board for the latners. And staff has placed this, this is a scaffold deal that someone vulnerable and who don't have this process, we need it. And I like to point out, and maybe call for, since we have an agenda recommendation under my time, the effort to bring back a policy that gives, that affords people with permitting issues to come back and have a process just like this. It don't exist for them. It's not been extended. So, that was the ask, and seeing this already formulated, that when I bring it up tonight under my time, this is what I will be talking about. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, second from Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 15 is a status report on transitional housing in Leon County. Commissioners, you may recall, this was requested by the board to provide this status report to you. Transitional housing, Commissioners, is a very specific category of housing on the continuum, which identifies those people and families that are experiencing homelessness. Again, the item before you provides an overview of the programmatic opportunities that are available in our community as well as some, as well as the responsible entities involved. We do have one speaker card, Karen Woodall.
Thank you, Karen Woodall. I reside at 579 East Call Street. Thank you for, Commissioner Proctor, for your nice comments earlier. Mainly, I'm just old. I did--
I didn't say that.
No, I said, I did. I want to appreciate and thank staff, Abby and Chinkton also, and Human Services for meeting with me about this issue. A couple of things I want to quickly mention. While I agree with and recognize the need for additional housing that we already have, the programs that are already in existence, we need additional beds and all, I want to point out that there are some gaps. Whenever you have categorical eligibility, you have gaps. So, there are people left out. Like, if you're a young person over 18, there's nothing other than Kearney Center. If you haven't been in prison, if you're not a veteran, if you're not pregnant, if you're not a victim of domestic violence, you're just out there. You have eviction notices. So, there's, as we go forward, I know it's going to be more conversations about this. We need to, I hope we will include something for those folks. And to that end, I shared with you a memo I had shared with you before, an exciting project in Atlanta called The Melody Project. I went there last week, and it was really cool. I'm really glad I went. I was very impressed. The people living there like it. It's right downtown Atlanta. The city of Atlanta has committed $5 million to their rapid rehousing program. So, The Melody Project is not considered transitional housing. It's rapid rehousing. There's some semantics with funding in the federal government. For me, I don't care what we call it. It's just figuring out some out-of-the-box thinking. And I was joking with them, this is kind of in the box, because they're using transitional, I mean, what do you call those things? Now, I forgot the name.
FEMA trailers.
Yeah, thanks. Well, they're not FEMA trailers. They're, they're the containers. Yeah. And actually, I thought they were more stable than trailers, because they're on the ground. They're secured on the ground. And with this community being, Atlanta gave downtown property right by the MARTA system, and it's where the people, the residents, lived. They lived on the street, right there. So, they have connections. And it's, it's pretty impressive. And I know that there's going to be some looking further into it with the COC coming up, the folks up there, so they'd be very happy to work with you. But I just want to highlight it, because I think it's a model that we're not doing. We're doing great things. We need to add to them. But there's some other things we could do that are innovative. So, I want to-- So I wanted to take this opportunity to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodall. We received your email and appreciate all the information, and we'll certainly, you know, look to staff to guide us on that. Commissioner O'Keefe, I've got you in the queue, followed by Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept staff report.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, a second from Commissioner Maddox. We're in discussion. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff on this, on some thoughts. The category of transitional housing is really what the report we got on, got was. There are, if I understand right, there are 500 transitional housing beds in Leon County. Currently, can anyone who qualifies find a spot today?
Each program has their own category of what, who can qualify for their programs, but they are constantly revolving with opportunities for people to enter if they meet the qualifications of those programs.
Gotcha. Are there, for any of those, are there open spots currently, or are they all usually filled up with a waitlist?
There are several with waitlists, and that's why the COC currently is working with these providers to secure additional dollars. Right now, the COC is applying as part, right now, as part of their NOFO that's coming up for additional beds into our community for transitional housing, with the priority being those areas for youth, especially those youth that are aging out of foster, or foster homes and other targeted populations here in our community.
Excellent. And then finally, for questions, do we know an estimate of how many transitional unit beds or spots Leon County would need to address the current needs for transitional housing?
Not off the top of my head, but that is, again, the priority that's been provided as part of COC that works very closely with our transitional housing providers have been in an area of those who are, not only those who are youth, they're transitioning out of foster homes, but also for domestic violence victims, and also those individuals that we work closely with when we're addressing the issue of returning citizens or citizens who are leaving our criminal justice system. As we mentioned, item commissioners, that's part of the reason also that the Board dedicated $100,000 as part of the Rental Housing Assistance Program that was recommended by the PSCC. That is mentioned in the gen item to address transitional housing for that population.
Awesome. Thank you for that. So this is a good report. It's helpful to know where we stand on transitional housing. And so we've learned that the example project in Atlanta, which is incredible, is rapid rehousing, is what they call it. And when, what triggered this, what initiated this request was it was generally following citizen Karen Woodall bringing it to our attention, and I believe she told us it took four months from start to finish, which is incredible. And so I really appreciate that. And now that we know she has, that I believe you have a meeting with the Continuum of Care folks, and I'm excited to hear what can happen for us to do something like this here. It's one of these things where I hope we can see more independent initiative from our teams and our organizations that do a lot of incredible things, but that we don't have to wait for a citizen to bring an example of another community doing a great project. And I'm hoping that when we see these come back, we see a lot of, yes, this is how we can do it, and a lot less, well, we can't because. So I'm very excited to hear, hopefully, some quick ideas and some quick updates come back from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. So in not defending our staff, but I can defend our staff, I think Commissioner Maddox should also be able to defend our staff. We've looked at what Ms. Woodall has suggested Atlanta is doing, those boxed cars, and our staff indicated and gave us a report, this new thing, and they were giving those cars away, dispersing them. And then a cost was attached to those cars. And some, multiple months ago, county administrator gave us a report. I can't remember if it was, I guess, a little workshop or whatever, but we have, perused, given contemplation. And once communities begin to identify those cars as a new form of housing, costs begin to, you know, spiral outward. It's something perhaps we should, could look at, in particular with Affordable Housing Initiative. Our Affordable Housing Initiative is somewhat of a policy recommendation and all of those things, but not specifically what kind of house, where would it go, the zoning for the special, you know, and all of that. But it's well worth our, you know, revisiting. And if Atlanta is willing to, and see, one of the thoughts about it is that the devaluation of a railroad car, it ain't sexy, and the devaluation of downtown. And if Atlanta is willing to allow its downtown to be devalued, if you want to look at it like that, with that kind of housing, then, and it is not taking value down. But if you look at it not from the way property appraiser Keen Akayami would look at it.
So it just takes the value down with these kinds of structures.
But what value is added is the holistic uplifting of humanity that is walking the street and in the cold. So in another perspective, to have those cars, whether they were downtown or next door to the governor's house, when you're protecting people and taking them from sleeping on the ground, to me, that adds value, to me. So I'm willing to look at it, your recommendation, Ms. Woodall, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. I'll be quick. Commissioner Proctor, you're right. I think I had asked for it to come back, and staff did bring it back for our consideration. Is that correct, Vince?
Yes.
I believe one of the biggest issues tied to it, Chinkton, I think your staff, I think somebody in your offices at the time looked at it, was the, was safety issue, if I'm not mistaken, I think related to the weather and hurricanes and things like that that nature may have here. I think it may be worth us giving another look at it, but I think at the time when we had the conversation, it was a pretty resounding understanding that it's not a direction that we would want to go in, given the cost per unit and also the risk that it took associated with, with the weather that we have here that they may not experience as much up in Atlanta and other areas. So if we're going to bring it back, I do think we have to take into consideration the conversation we had last time, but also think about how do we address the things that we talked about in our previous conversation. I do appreciate the persistence and consistency that you bring to us in considering the idea, but I do want those things addressed if we're going to have this conversation again, that we would be able to talk about those things that we saw as an issue that led us to not moving forward with the idea in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Any further discussion? We seen none.
Mr. Chair, on point, the motion on the floor is just for staff recommendation.
Yes, sir, and we've got Commissioner O'Keefe, and you were the second.
All right, Mr. Chair, in order for us to consider what we're talking about here, it would have to be added on as an amendment, correct? Because staff recommendation didn't bring back contemplation on it?
No, no. Mr. Chairman, what the item does is it clarifies that we'll be working with the COC going forward and to identify exploration of this and a lot of other alternatives, and make sure we bring that back to you.
All right, we've got a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cummings, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to thank Karen Woodall for coming tonight, doing her presentation. And I believe we received something by email about the initiative in Atlanta, but that had been raised before, and I believe by Commissioner Maddox, and we've addressed it, but I know we are all concerned about reducing homelessness and looking at transitional housing. But I think we are also, we've got to weigh the health, safety, welfare of those needing transitional housing and protecting them with whatever we, as the county government, provides for them. And I agree with Commissioner Maddox. When we discussed it before, that was a, that was a concern, that perhaps we would be placing some of those individuals in harm's way with the structure of that temporary housing. So I think it's worth looking at again if we want to, but I would certainly want to promote something that would be, would not be number one, a safety hazard, considering the storms we have here, the hurricanes, you know, that occur, the tornadoes that occur, number one. And while we want to reduce those incidents that could occur, I think being responsible for the public's funding, we want to make sure, I believe, that we use the funding in a manner that's going to provide more safety for those transitional citizens. So I'll be, you know, I'm willing to consider it again, but consider it and consider staff recommendations as well, but I think we need to look at something that would be in the line of more safe housing for our individuals, rather than just having something to say, here's a place you can go. We've got that responsibility, I believe, to the citizens of Leon County. And I think that's consistent with the sentiment expressed by Commissioner Proctor as well. So I would certainly support it coming back at some point, but I just think we've got to be deliberate when we look at it and just make sure we're not just putting a Band-Aid on a problem and create a bigger problem. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. That's something we can revisit in our commissioner time if you guys want to ask staff for some analysis on that. Okay, seeing no more discussion, we've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, a second from Commissioner Maddox on pool, staff recommendation on item 15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. It passes unanimously. I believe that moves us on to general business. Mr. County Administrator, I would like to say, commissioners, I would like us to have a 5:30 hard stop recess, so that gives us about 45 minutes to work through some of the general business, if that's okay with you guys. And we'll see how close we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 19 provides the Board with an after-action report on the county's preparation, response, recovery efforts related to Hurricane Helene, which of course made landfall back in September. Commissioners, this action, after-action report serves as a summary of actions taken to date by Leon County in response to the hurricane and provides findings and recommendations from the emergency activation. Commissioners, you all know that it's obviously very obvious and public what we do at the county in our coordination of emergencies like this and the preparation of the response and the recovery. But as you also know, commissioners, we put an awful lot of attention to extract every possible lesson learned from each emergency. And so Helene was no exception. We've done so. We've got an item, which I know is very comprehensive before you tonight, so we won't go through it all. Did want to point out that the roughly $1.3 million incurred by the county from Helene, we do anticipate 100% federal reimbursement there. Again, we've got options one through three before you. I've got Matt Cavell and Kevin here to provide a presentation for you. However, commissioners, we can also, we're also here just to accept any questions that you may have for us as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're recommending options one, two, and three, and we're happy to take any questions you might have. We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Do we have a motion? Mr. Caban?
I'll move staff recommendations, options one, two, and three.
All right, we've got a motion and a second by Commissioner Cummings. We're in discussion. Or, well, I guess we can play this. Do you guys have a presentation?
Only if requested by the Board. We're ready for it, but we're happy to answer any questions.
If anybody would like a presentation, let me know. If we're okay, we can go right into discussion, comments. Commissioner Caban, you are in the queue.
I honestly have no comments. I read the report very thorough. I think we've heard several times this year that the actions and efforts for our Leon County team, and for that, I am thankful.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think it could be said enough what an amazing job our team does for emergency management in what feels like year after year of increasing rare storm and disaster events. And I want to give you a big, a big thank you for doing these detailed reviews and after-action reports that allow you to only, not only build on what you do, but to really continue to be leaders in the field. So thank you, and at every opportunity, I think we just continue to say thank you for that.
Perfectly said, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a great detailed report. It gives us all the statistics. It also looks forward in to changes that the organization has projected to make, to make it a better, more smooth operation. But being involved with the last hurricanes last year, I certainly appreciate more and applaud all the communication, the coordination, common radio stations, including the National Weather Service, that Mr. Peters and our county administrator and all those emergency management individuals coordinate. I was able to sit in on some of those during the last hurricane at the emergency center, some of those calls. I mean, and it's amazing, even with the National Weather Service online with those calls, to make sure our citizens are informed, make sure we're informed about the status of the weather. So I can say nothing but accolades of Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Peters and all those, and the coordination with Leon County Schools, the Red Cross. I mean, it's just such a major operation, but it's all designed to keep us informed and to protect our citizens. But I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. In reading the report and the projected changes to make the operations better, I noticed that, and I looked at all the costs that were incurred and all the debris that was removed. But my question relates to the power outages, and I know we don't own the power company in Taquen or the city of Tallahassee electrical service, but a lot of the loss related to loss of electricity, some individuals for days and, you know, weeks, that resulted in the spoilage of food, having to go to hotels to live, be in this place from the homes. Now, I know that there is federal grant funds to assist states and cities, municipalities with transitioning from overhead electrical lines to underground, burying the electrical lines. So my question is, County Administrator, and maybe to staff, do we know if the city has a major plan, or if there have been applications for grants to transition a certain percentage of the overall electrical, of the overhead electrical lines to bury those lines? And, well, if I can get answers to that question. And, well, if I can get answers to that question, then I'll do my follow-up question.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, and again, I'll just hit it at the very high level. Again, I can tell you that the city does do a very good job with respect to evaluating their system in terms of continuity, which is their most important thing. So what you see a lot of times with new development is they are doing underground. A lot of times with your older development, they are keeping it underground, again, as they evaluate, again, the resiliencies of their own systems, including the fact that on top of the ground, the overhead wires are, in many cases, easier to repair than the underground. They're making those determinations, however. I know they look very closely at it. I couldn't speak to it beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. And then my other question is, since there are grant programs with, is there an opportunity, perhaps, for the county to maybe partner with the city? I'm not sure if, since we're not a utility, if we would be eligible to even apply for those grants? And I say that because, you know, we love our trees, and so we're not going to remove our trees, but trees on the power lines, I think, contributed to a lot of the issues, you know, that we have during the storms and the hurricanes. And so, and those trees are in the county, in our jurisdiction, as well as the cities. But I guess my question overall is, is there, I know Mr. County Administrator cannot speak for the city, but is it possible that we start discussions with the city, maybe partnership with the city, if we could apply for grants and perhaps turn those funds over to the city, especially in areas in the city that's dense, you know, very heavily populated, to reduce some of the devastation with the trees on power lines and what have you, and curtail some of the power outages and losses that we incurred during the storms and hurricanes?
Mr. Chairman, we do an awful lot of vulnerability assessment countywide with the city, which is very good, because kind of irrespective of jurisdiction, we look at our community vulnerabilities and do identify grant opportunities and that sort of thing. That said, for the utility grant funding, the eligible recipients are, and applicants are the utilities.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that response, Mr. County Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Any other discussion? I just wanted to add, you know, these reports are great, and Kevin and Matt and you guys and all your staff really do a remarkable job. And the after-action reports, while beneficial to us, we probably have a little more knowledge about what goes on than the average person, and these are great for the general public to look and really see what goes into preparation and response in regards to the numerous storms we now face. There's an article in the Touson Democrat this morning, I think, about this report. So there's a lot of great information in here, and it really is a testament to the work that we do here at the county, running that operations center and, you know, responding to these storms. So, thank you. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion from Commissioner Caban and seconded by Commissioner Cummings for staff recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. None, it passes 6-0. You're in favor.
Uh.
Yes, ma'am. So all opposed, there's no opposed, and Commissioner Maddox is out of chamber, so 6-0. Did he just come back in?
Yeah.
Commissioner Maddox, you good?
I agree.
So we have a show, Commissioner Maddox, in favor of staff recommendations, unanimous. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item, item number 20, seeks the board's approval to award three-year grant funding agreements to five of the Tourism Legacy Grant Events for fiscal years '25 through '27, Springtime Tallahassee-Lemoine, Chain of Parks Art Festival, Market Days, ASG Capital Cup, and the Florida State Invitational Tottenham. So we've got, again, the item before you has a fiscal impact. Adequate funds, of course, are budgeted and anticipated in this case. All of these programs have gone through the program evaluations as established by the board, and again, we're recommending the board of the agreements before you. I know that Carrie is here. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, but we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair, move option one.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion from Commissioner Minor and a second from Commissioner O'Keefe. We're in discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Carrie, how you doing? So, we just recently had a phenomenal event held at Cascade Park with Everly, with T-Pain. The very next day, there was supposed to be an event at Civic Center that featured Muni Long and Jeezy. I was excited about that, by the way. You know, I was wondering, one of the things that we, that we, I think we could do here, and I'm not sure it's something that's in your camp, but it's something I would like for us to brainstorm around, how do we do it? You know, we're not a huge market for big shows, and I'm wondering, how do we get there? You know, the shows that may go to a larger market, let's say like in Atlanta, or, you know, Charlotte, or somewhere like that, we kind of get those shows, but we don't really get as many of those shows. And so, if you can talk to me a little bit about, and I know it's probably because those markets are bigger and the facilities are bigger, how do we, how do we move to a place where, maybe when FSU finishes their stadium, or maybe a renovation of the Civic Center, Acoustics or something like that, you know, how far are we from, and what do we need to be able to attract those types of shows on a more regular basis?
Ms. Post?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. It's really venue-based. It's really what it boils down to, is having the venue, whether it's an outdoor venue or just more of a seated, like a stadium. I think really what you're looking at for the larger shows, Doke would be a perfect example, once they do finish the renovations, to allow us to go after these bigger stadium or arena shows, because that's really what it boils down to. As far as the other, like, major artists, it's difficult from a price point, because we just don't have the seats.
Right.
To be able to pay the artist fees and not have a ticket that's, you know, $500. So it really is the venue, I think, can get us closer to what you're looking for.
And that's what I was going to ask. Does our citizenry have the discretionary income to really afford those types of shows, to get enough of our folks there that'll make it worth, show those types of shows, those artists coming here?
From a local market perspective, you're absolutely right. We're limited here, and as you know, Tallahassee, Leon County's kind of an island, you know, because we don't have a lot of other major cities to draw from, to come here. But that's the good thing about for us, is we market the shows out of market to get them to come here. But to your point, we would have a larger market to afford more of the higher-ticket shows if we literally had more communities around us.
So if you had to assess, if you had to assess our ability to attract talent, would you say that we're, if you had to, I mean, I don't know how to classify themselves, but you had major, mid-major, smaller acts, would you say we're kind of more in that, on a constant basis, being able to attract that mid-major that's trying to ascend themselves to that next level? Or can we, can we get those major acts in town to draw a lot of people?
Well, I'd say we have a sweet spot, for sure, of like the type of artists, because, again, the artist wants to come to, for the venue and obviously the ticket sales that support it. But I'd say we're probably mid-range, in that I would argue that T-Pain was a major, you know, I mean, so we're bringing in our Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, but to your point, the arena shows, the big arena shows are absolutely driven by venue. So we have a little bit of time on that.
And it's not just, just recording artists, I'm talking about comedy shows, the orators and of the likes, you know? So that's something I would, you know, it could be a five-year, 10-year thing that we're looking at, but it's something I really am interested in us really trying to figure out, how do we get there? Because I think, you know, Leon County is a great place to raise kids, you know, if you're, it's a great, great place to have a profession, great place to live. But I think especially for that, I would say 35 to, let's say, 55 range, that are really looking for those, I say young professionals or mid, you know, middle-aged professionals that are looking for those experiences that they might get in Atlanta, or Savannah, or even a Jacksonville. If we could, if we could get more of those here, I think it would make, it would make us even more attractive for those folks, not only to live here and raise their children here, but to also have a good time here. And I do, let me say this, Mr. Chair, and I'll give the mic back over. I appreciate the efforts that we are making, because we do have the Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, the Charlie Wilsons, the T-Pains, which is huge for us, Boys and Men, I think, came. So we do make the efforts. It's just, you know, I would like to see it more often. You know, there are markets where every month, you got somebody big coming in town with us, you know, it could be every few months, you know, once, twice a year, you know, that the major, major act's coming in that we have, and I'd just like to see it more regularly. And I know it's going to take some effort, it's going to take some time, but I want to commit to that if we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I think what you're trying to say is you want to get Taylor Swift to come to.
No, I was trying to get Outkast. I've been trying to get Outkast here for years.
No, no, man, come on.
They're not performing anymore.
We won't have them, will you? You know what I'm saying?
I was excited, Ms. Post, about Alison Krauss, which is basically the greatest bluegrass singer in America today, coming in April, so that's, I'll be at that one for sure. Any other discussion, Commissioners, or comments? Madam, immediate past here, Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, of course, I'm in support of staff recommendation, but since we, we are talking about tourism dollars and, I guess, attractions coming to the city of Tallahassee, I think our tourism people do a great job. This doesn't chronicle all the millions that have, I think, it's probably over a billion over the last five years, right, in tourism dollars that have come in to Leon County.
We're on track to reach our $5 billion goal. We're actually pacing very, very well, yes. And a lot of it is very event-driven. Events are great motivators for travel.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I just want to commend Ms. Post for the great job that she does, and also for all the events that she scheduled during our bicentennial this last year. I mean, we just had a great time with all the events and under her leadership, in conjunction with the city as well. And we had our culminating event last month, which was, which was just a great weekend. So I just appreciate her leadership, and I'm asking if the Commissioner would join me in giving her a round of applause for all the hard work she did.
Thank you. Total team effort.
During our bicentennial, maybe you get a little bit more rest in 2025 than you did in 2024.
Now, we're ramping up for Worlds across country, but thank you for that thought.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I was going to give you a shout-out, Commissioner Proctor, for repping us on the TDC anyway, but I see you're in the queue. You are recognized.
Yeah, I was going to ask Ms. Post, good evening, if you would share, for the good of the order, our final closeout activities for the celebration bicentennial, and just that it might be positive in our hearing.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate that opportunity. As you know, we are still, you know, ambitious from the beginning, and we are festive till the end. We're going all the way to New Year's Eve, Ms. McBub, because of course, on December 29th is Leon County's 200th anniversary. So again, we're going to stretch it all the way out to New Year's. There are several events that are taking place this month, again, through Goodwood, movie showings, I mean, all kinds of. We had our bicentennial float and the Winterfest Parade. We were way in the back. You guys were way up front. We were way in the back.
You all weren't behind the horses, though.
No, we were not. We were not behind the horses. But again, we will culminate, the end of the year will be over 200 events this entire year. But again, New Year's Eve is really the big kickoff. If I may, at the opportunity, invite any of you all, all of you, if you would like to come and speak at the New Year's Eve event, that's really the big blowout for the bicentennial. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you, Ms. Post. We appreciate all you do, and you are the queen of the anniversaries.
I think so.
Stick around for another 100 years. So we have a motion by Commissioner Minor and a second from Commissioner O'Keefe for staff recommendations. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. We are on to item 21, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, this item, item 21, seeks your appointment of Commissioners to authorities, boards, committees, and/or councils. We have, we're seeking your appointment of Commissioners to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, the Canopy Roads Committee, the CSC, and the LCRDA. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you to facilitate the votes.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. We're going to, if you guys are okay with it, we'll take these one by one. The first one up is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I would, I think that what we should do is sort of ask the current sitting members if they're, what their preference is. That would be my suggestion, unless someone has a better idea. So Commissioner Maddox, you're first up on Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Is that something you want to remain on, or?
Aboluted.
Okay. Okay, so we have, can we, Ms. Madam County Attorney, can we take, can we move these one by one? Okay. So we have a motion on Commissioner Maddox staying on Affordable Housing Advisory Council. Do we have a second?
I move.
Second for Commissioner Minor. Okay, so we, motion from Commissioner Caban, second from Commissioner Minor. Any discussion? Yes, discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this really is general for all, but it's the first opportunity to, on the appointments, and is, I know that all of our Commissioners who serve on these commissions or committees do an excellent job representing us in the community, just as they do on this dais. And while having long-serving members on the different boards gives individual expertise, I want to put out there that as we think about the other appointments, putting, rotating may have two benefits. One of perhaps bringing a different perspective to a board, and two, allowing Commissioners to have a more broad experience of getting in to each community issue over their term. Just wanted to pitch that. This, but, and fully support reappointing Commissioner Maddox, as he's done a great job. This is more general.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. I think that, I totally appreciate your points there. I just think that from an order perspective, I would suggest that if there is a Commissioner who feels strongly that they would like to replace another Commissioner, just offer that to the board, and then, you know, the sitting Commissioner can sort of make the decision about whether to capitulate and let someone else try that or not. So first right of refusal, so to speak. So we've got a motion and a second for Commissioner Maddox to maintain that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, showing it passes unanimously. Now we're on Appalachia Regional Planning Council. Currently, that is Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Minor, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to serve another term.
Aboluted. A second.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Commissioner Maddox and a second from Commissioner Cummings to reappoint Commissioner Minor to the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, showing none, it passes unanimously. We are now on to the Canopy Roads Citizens Committee. Currently, Commissioner O'Keefe, that is your seat. What do you feel about that?
I like to open it up to anybody. I like serving, it's an important issue, but I don't need to be the only tree person on the commission, so anyone interested, it's a great service to do.
Okay, is there, are there any Commissioners that have a passion for Canopy Roads Citizens Committee at this point in time? Seeing none, Commissioner O'Keefe, it feels like you are the default member of the CRC Committee. Are you okay with that?
Uh, yes.
You can say no.
I can't say no, but.
I move Department Commissioner O'Keefe to the Canopy Roads Citizens Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Caban, Commissioner O'Keefe, appointment to, reappointment to Canopy Road Citizens Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no, none, showing it passes unanimously. We are now on to the Children's Services Council of Leon County. That's a four-year term, currently being filled by Commissioner Cummings. I will entertain motions.
I move Commissioner Cummings to be reappointed to the Children's Services Council.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Proctor and a second from Commissioner Minor to reappoint Commissioner Cummings to the Children's Services Council. You're happy with that? Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I think you've done a great job representing us over there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, showing none, passes unanimously. And the last one is the Leon County Research and Development Authority. Commissioner Minor is the current appointee. This is another four-year term. I know you were fulfilling a term, Commissioner Minor. Would you like to be reappointed?
Mr. Chair, if it's the will of the board, I would like to serve another term.
Okay. All right. Outstanding. We've got a motion from Commissioner Command, second from Commissioner Maddox for, to reappoint Commissioner Minor to the LCRDA for a four-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, show it passes unanimously. I believe that satisfies the item, Commissioner, Mr. County Administrator, Madam County Administrator. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 22 seeks the board's full appointments for, appointments of citizens this time for the Audit Advisory Committee, the Canopy Roads Citizen Committee, and the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group. Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item and, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it back to you to facilitate the votes.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. We'll start with same way, option one. We've got two citizens applying for staff recommendation. Well, I guess we'll take, take a motion.
I so move to appoint Jeffrey Caines, Valerie Peacock to the Audit Committee.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, second from Commissioner Proctor on staff recommendation for option one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, show it passes unanimously. We are on, uh, uh, option number two under staff recommendations. Two citizens to the Canopy Road Citizens Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move staff recommendation, option two.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Cummings, second from Commissioner Minor for staff recommendation, option two. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, show it passes unanimously. We are on option three.
Chairman, I move reappoint to the Joint Cycle Committee, Justin Pogue, Eric Draper, and Robert Furstein.
We have a motion. And, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe and a second from Commissioner Cummings for staff recommendation, option three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, show it passes unanimously. And we are on option four. Lastly, appoint one citizens to the Bicycling Work Group. Any motions?
Uh, Mr. And Mr. Chair, I move staff recommendation, option four.
A second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cummings and a second from Commissioner O'Keefe for staff recommendation, option four. All those in favor, well, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we have no opposition, show it passes unanimously. And that is the completion of our general business, I believe. We've got, I'll ask the board, what's your pleasure? We've got 45 minutes until our, until our public hearings. Do you want to recess now, take a little break? Or do you want to maybe hear from the county administrator, county attorney before we have our public hearing and then go into commissioner discussion? I think there may be some, some conversations in commissioner discussion, so I don't think we can do it.
I say just move on. That's my, my opinion.
You want to go? Okay.
Let's go items we're discussing, yeah.
Can we, can we go ahead to items from county administrator and items from county attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to give a shout out to the attorneys and staff in the county attorney's office. They do yeoman's work day in and day out. They do a fantastic job. They make me look good and they really are fantastic professionals to work with. Also, I just want to thank Vince and the rest of county staff for a great working relationships. Thank the board for its leadership and wish everyone a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator.
Wow, we, we didn't even coordinate, Mr. Chairman. I just, I seldom do this because we've got so much really exceptional work going on all the time with county staff. But I did tonight, just wanted, you know, have a, a special recognition, given the courthouse dedication and all that went into that, to Matt and Kiana Gilli, Kiana emphasis added, and our facility staff and all that went into that, to say it was a success is really an understatement. And so many of our stakeholders in the judiciary just couldn't have been happier about it. We couldn't have been more honored to be a part of it. So with that, I just wanted to give really Matt and Kiana especially, who is our point person, and our facility staff, of course, just to, you know, extra kudos for that work. Also, commissioners, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. We've got 15 minutes, y'all. If there are commissioner discussion items that we can get through quickly, we can maybe get through some of us, then break at 5:30 and come back and do the rest after our public hearing. So Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, happy holidays. You're doing a great job running this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I appreciate it. I've been checking out your bling all night and I'm wondering what that is. Looks like, it looks like something important. You know what I'm saying? And then, I know, yeah. I knew he would probably, he was wearing his tonight. And Commissioner Cummings, I've been looking at your Reed earrings all night too and they're magnificent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the county administrator in giving accolades to staff for that outstanding dedication of the courthouse to Judge Augustus Akins. I've heard from a lot of the judges as well and they just really enjoyed it. It just went very, very smooth. So Kiana and Matt, county administrator, all of you guys, it was, it was just a beautiful occasion for any of us that, that weren't able to attend. And I also do, I want to thank the members of Public Works that invited us to their Thanksgiving luncheon. It was really nice, really enjoyed it and looking forward to the Christmas luncheon as well. But this is our last meeting of the year and I certainly want to wish all the commissioners and staff and those here a Merry Christmas and certainly a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you, great meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Keefe, do you want to go now or wait?
Quick ones.
Perfect.
I'd like to request a proclamation recognized in January 19th to 25th as Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week. It's a request made by the Florida Association of Nurse Anesthesiology. There are 60,000 practicing nurse anesthetists who provide this service to patients in the U.S. Armed Services. And I'd like to recognize that.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion for Commissioner O'Keefe, second from Commissioner Minor for proclamation for, for Nurse Anesthetist Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
Awesome, thank you. Also, I want to invite everybody to the longest table memorial and fundraiser at the Kearney Center. This is going to be Saturday, December 21st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Kearney Center. It's going to be a free community dinner where they're going to recognize all their, our unhoused neighbors who died over the past year. It's a very touching event. I also am excited and want to invite everybody to the St. Mark's Trailhead opening on Thursday, December 12th at 10:00 a.m. And finally, I would like to request that Alison Krauss play "When You Say Nothing At All" because that's my wedding song. And I'm, was a little offended because you say it best when you say nothing at all. That's what my wife said. So happy, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe, this is going to maybe freak you out, but that was also my first dance at my wedding of the same song. Yeah, I thought the same thing, like, wow, maybe I should stop talking. Commissioner Minor?
Hearing that song repeatedly causes you to lose your hair. Just wanted to say that. Sorry. Where that came from.
You're right, you're right.
I'm, I'm going to. I'm right behind you guys. Quick update on the FAC Legislative Conference that we had last week. The FAC membership by unanimous vote approved the proposal to ask the state of Florida to join the Southern Rail Commission. So that was, that is now a legislative priority for 2025 for the Florida Association of Counties. I want to thank everybody here for your support in that, that it makes a difference. The next major step for us in this is to work with a House member and a, and a state senate member to get a joint resolution proposed in both chambers. Hopefully work through legislative session to get that resolution adopted and then signed by the governor. That's basically all required to have the state of Florida initiate the process for joining the Southern Rail Commission. Then what, once that happens, the SRC would vote to approve. And then each of the three legislators of the existing states, Alabama, Louisiana, Mississippi, would then approve then. So it's a multi-step process, but the first step is, is, is well underway. So just want to thank everybody for their help on that. Next thing, I just, I, this is the last county commission meeting we have for 2024. Just wanted to wish everybody a happy 200th for Leon County and Tallahassee. It's been quite a year and as Ms. Post and Commissioner Proctor recognized, I mean, it's been an incredible year of events, a lot of hard work, but Leon County and Tallahassee are worth celebrating. So thanks to Ms. Post and your team and everybody in the county and city for, for organizing those events. Next, I wanted to, you know, Nafal and I were at a, a meeting with some other county staff and some citizens from a, a group that had met with us a few days ago. And we heard yet again how amazing our county staff is to work with. And I, I'm not going to mention the, the people that said it to us, but we hear this all the time. How incredible, how incredibly talented our staff are, how dedicated they are, how much they care about this community and show it. And we say that here a lot on, on the dais, but I just want to say it one more time as we close 2024 out. We can't be too grateful for everything that, that everybody in Leon County does. You all are the best. And every single day, I'm, I'm proud to be working with every single one of you. So thank you for everything you do. It means a lot. We see it all the time around, around the community, how much people appreciate the work that you do. I just want to pass that on. Finally, just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you all at the New Year's event that Ms. Post is organizing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. We're going to hop back to the vice chair if that's okay with you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Command?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some business to discuss, but before that, I, I was in, in the back using the restroom. Did anyone give an early birthday shout out to Commissioner Maddox yet?
Not yet.
Well, tomorrow's your birthday, right? Yeah. Happy early birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, the, over the weekend, I spent some time in, in Bradfordville. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair Welch's district. And I, I do want to give you some kudos to some of the, the infrastructure work. The sidewalks, the lights, the, the, the work that's being done up there is great. However, not to get Commissioner Proctor going, but.
Commissioner Command, are you going to be able to get this done by 5:30?
I am.
Okay.
So I think that when you look at Bradfordville and you look at North Leon County, you look at Woodville, I think there's some clear infrastructure discrepancies as far as like, you know, what the standard is and as far as our timelines and, and where we are going as a board. And so ultimately, I want to get to a place where we have some sidewalk projects, better lighting and road improvements in Woodville. But to start, I, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to do a traffic and, and safety study on Woodville Highway from county line to Capital Circle Southwest and Oak Ridge Road from Taft Road to Crawfordville Highway with a specification of vehicle and pedestrian safety.
Second.
All right.
A motion for traffic and safety study on Woodville Highway from county line to Capital Circle Southwest and Oak Ridge Road from Taft Road to Crawfordville Highway with a specification of vehicle and pedestrian safety.
Where's Taft Road?
Taft Road is the, the, it goes north to south on the east side of, if you take Oak Ridge Road east.
360.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a, from Commissioner Command for a traffic study and a second from Commissioner Proctor. Any discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is absolutely a critical issue. My, my only objection here is we have an item coming back for pedestrian safety initiatives that we can bring new initiatives to, and that was based on two fatalities on Highway 27 and Capital Circle in the period of three weeks. And so I think I would absolutely support this. I'd ask that it be amended to include Highway 27 from Capital Circle out east for four miles.
What? Commissioner Command, how do you feel about that?
I have no problem including it in the motion. My, my record for point of order is just, maybe just, you also do a motion if it's okay with the chair, just to.
Gonna bifurcate those, Commissioner O'Keefe?
You get what I'm saying?
Absolutely. If you, if you don't mind me making a motion.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. We can come back to you.
Good with that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Cool.
So we've got a, we have a motion from Commissioner Command. Who is the second? Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Command?
That's all.
That's it?
Yep. Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays. Hope you have a great break and I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the retreat. I believe it's our next meeting in January, right?
January 27th, I think, is our retreat, yep. And then the 28th is our meeting.
Where's the, do we have a location for that?
Is at the Bradfordville Country Store.
Bradley's.
Bradley's. Bradley's, Bradley's.
Bradley's Country Store. They've got a new cell tower out there. It's great, you guys. Commissioner O'Keefe, I'll come back to you for your motion. Is that, is that okay with you?
Thank you. After or now we'll knock it out?
Right now.
Mr. Chair, I move that we do a, have staff do a traffic and safety study for vehicle and pedestrians from the intersection of Capital Circle and Highway 27 eastward for five miles.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe, a second from Vice Chair Command. Do you guys need any more clarification on that?
No, just we're keeping track of the segments because some of these segments may or may not be county roads. And so in which cases, we would just coordinate to our greatest extent with FDOT and whoever else. Certainly we'll do, we'll keep you posted along the way.
Is that enough information?
We've got it, we've got what we need.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.